Good evening and welcome to the September 16th regular school board meeting. Let's call the meeting to order. We have some pledges to help us tonight.
Yeah, I'm really excited. I have Ella and we have Emily. So we're feeling a little bit shy, but so they're gonna stay where they are unless they wanna come up and join me with any point they can. We practiced at school and they were loud and proud and in the sponsors they're loud and proud, but you know, an audience is tricky. But this little guy's not shy.
Do you want to introduce him first?
I think it's me.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Sorry.
So this is God Bell. Perfect. This is God Bell. And Miss Chris, the teachers nominated them because in the classroom they are excellent, excellent at the pledge of allegiance. And you know, tomorrow is Constitution Day. We all know about that because there's a new rule about that in school, so we're gonna have to celebrate it and honor it. So I'm checking that box off kind of at this moment. Because the flag is important, right? It's a symbol of our country and important that we say the pledge. And so at the ECLC, teachers are really committed to doing that each day. So without further ado, we're gonna go ahead and say the pledge. Ella and Emily, from afar. Here we go, okay? We're all together. Here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yes, so thank you for coming. They are truly our kind, caring, respectful, superstar kindergarteners. You know, kindergarteners get shy. So we have pens. I already gave Emily hers. Ella gets one. She gets one. Can you say thanks?
You're here. You're present.
Thanks for coming!
I mean, it's early in the year.
Maybe we'll put BMS first next year.
We put it first last year. We mixed it up. We probably should've let an older student go first.
They were great in school, but it's different. This is very intimidating environment, for sure.
So can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Question first?
Sure.
Do we need to make a change to the agenda that if the Dover representative Cole shows up later, we'd slide him in later? Or just do that without?
So we can just announce that if he, like we do with the select board. If they come, we'll squeeze them in.
Motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes. There's one change that I noticed in that it has Carrie Neal in attendance and she was not.
And also it says September 16th at the top.
The minutes themselves?
Yeah.
Yikes.
I read them, but I guess I didn't do such a great job. I guess I didn't.
What was that on September 16th that said at the top?
At the top of the minutes themselves instead of the second.
Y'all know I'm not that quiet. My name would've been in the transcript if I was here.
She was missed terribly, that's how we know.
So she's just listed at the top, not elsewhere in the?
Yes.
Yes, just listed as intended.
Yep.
Honest, I did read them.
Anyone wanna make a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Make a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One exception, please.
And Cole has arrived, just in time. Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thanks for coming back this year.
Yep.
How are things in Dover?
Good. A lot different this year. Um, but yeah, I like it.
So what's different? Tell us about the changes.
Uh, the new phone policy is very different than what we were used to. Before, there was not really any restrictions with the phones. And now there is full restriction with the phones.
Yeah, state law will do that.
Yeah, and I feel like people are adjusting pretty well overall. And it hasn't been very like difficult for the school.
What do they have you do with your phones, out of curiosity?
Um, all personal electronics have to be like fully powered off and in your backpacks for bell to bell. And all the backpacks must be in one corner of the room away from everybody.
Recited that well, see? Clearly, clearly you know.
Yeah.
Well, glad people are adjusting to that.
How's your cheer season going?
Pretty well this year. I'm hoping that we can get another state title.
Defending, right?
Yeah, we won fall, winter, and then we won New England's, so.
Nice, that's awesome.
Just a few wins. What about some start of school events?
Um, homecoming is coming up in Spirit Week. I believe it's next week, Spirit Week, and then homecoming would be on that Saturday, which is, it's sooner than last year was, but I'm, I think that everyone's really excited to start it earlier this year.
And who are you playing for the homecoming game?
I actually don't know yet.
Okay.
Anything else going on at school?
Not really. I don't think so.
All right. I know, it's only like day 11, so.
Yeah.
Things are still warming up.
What grade are you in this year?
Ten.
Ten. Nice.
All right, well, we'll let you out of the hot seat. Thank you, Cole.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for agreeing to come back. We'll see you in a few months?
Yeah.
All right, so select board update. We did not have a selectman here. He arrives, we'll fit him in. Public comment, we have no public in person or online.
Oh, we're popular.
So you're up, Deanna.
Okay, here we go. So there are some things I mentioned were upcoming in my report that I will focus my conversation there as opposed to what's written in the report. Elizabeth and I had to move our first, on the calendar, I'm calling them a connection time. It's a walkthrough, but also an opportunity to just connect one-on-one with principals and assistant principals if appropriate or needed that particular week. But every other week, I'm scheduled to just go in and walk around and connect and see what's happening. Did BES the previous week and it was just really exciting to see how calm and ready kids were in the beginning of the school year. It has a very different feel. I don't know what we wanna attribute that to, but you know, we did do a lot of work over the summer communicating code of conduct and I feel like perhaps families did take some time to review that with their kiddos. And principals certainly have spent a lot of time making sure in a developmentally appropriate way that they've communicated that as well. Laura and I walked through. The other thing is that you could walk through a grade level and they were all, you could see strict adherence to the master schedule, basically. So if a particular grade level was supposed to be doing literacy, you saw literacy in all five or six of those classrooms. And the same thing at ECLC. It happened to be afternoon, it was math time, and they're like little scholars already. It's really fun and we get to see a little bit of some problem solving and communication going on with the three and four-year-olds. So it's, it's just been a nice, calm start to the school year as far as students and the adjustment to classrooms goes. Vicky was able to just give me a quick kind of verbal financial update today. It always takes a little bit of time to transition out of one budget year into another. So with everything encumbered, all our known, you know, items, we're sitting at about a half a million dollars right now, which is much more healthy than we were at the start of last school year because we had some facility things we had to take care of last year. We know that of course it's only September and there's a lot of variables. Things will change throughout the year. The typical variables are high school enrollment. We still don't have the Dover High School tuition rate, which is not atypical. We have to wait until they submit their DOE 25 to get that rate. We will have it before we actually go to hearing, so it will pop at some point during the budget process. And we know that special education, student services as a whole and facilities can be a little bit of a moving target sometime. So right now, she will do an actual written report for October, but just figured I'd let you know where we were at the onset. I think we have to have a pretty healthy discussion in the upcoming weeks about enrollment numbers. We haven't had to really talk enrollment other than asking for, to add teachers over the past 10 years or so. We saw a spike, gosh, probably a good 10, 11 years ago at ECLC with preschool and kindergarten numbers. We added a preschool and a kindergarten teacher handful of years ago. And now we're seeing a four-year, not huge, but a little bit of a downward trend. So our typical is 100 per grade level plus at each of those. And next year, first through fourth, we obviously don't know what kindergarten will look like coming in, but first through fourth, based on the numbers we have right now, all of those grade levels will be under 100. So I just think it's a good time to have those conversations about class sizes and next steps as we, before we jump into the real throes of the budget season. Uh, let's see. Some of the other things in my report, I will talk, they have specific agenda items, so I will wait to do those then. Connor and Vicky had a conversation about, once she, we filed and certified the DOE 25, she was off by a half a cent in one line, so I had to go back in. Silly, that's a half a cent. So the DOE 25 and the MS 24 have both been submitted and now resubmitted. And so from the communication that was sent out, kind of alerting the taxpayers, like in December, this is what you can expect your, how much you can expect your bill to go up by. Now that we are settled post audit, we will able to reduce that tax impact by 19 cents per thousand. So that will help pretty significantly in the overall picture for folks. And let's see, a couple of committee updates, policy.
I'm sorry, before you go, I received a verbal confirmation from Sarah Gould that she's just gonna be getting back to you about the...
And she's a yes or no?
She's a, she's a yes.
Oh, great.
But she'll formally respond, but I just happened to see her at the volleyball.
Oh, excellent. Wonderful. I've nagged her a few times, so I was like, I don't wanna nag her again. But we are losing some, some members with some history, so I'm glad that she is able to do that because she has that knowledge and historical perspective. So wonderful. Policy committee, I don't know that once a month is gonna cut it this year. So I may have to reach out to the members and suggest that we have two meetings. My initial thinking is one meeting a month. We can continue to focus on our folders and updates and then the other meeting can be a lot of those mandates that are coming forward that require updating. I just feel like we're gonna get bogged down if we don't meet a little bit more regularly. We're not gonna make the progress that we will need to. And we will only be focusing on must-dos instead of trying to refresh our current ones that haven't been looked at for a while. So we meet, I think, October 2nd anyway, the first week, and so we can chat as a group about doing that. We've got the changes from the Ed 306 is coming and I attended a legal update Friday afternoon and there are some interesting changes from that as well. So we today had the asbestos review at the ECLC, which we were all kind of head scratching about because that was eradicated multiple years ago. The good news is, is we're all good to go, nice green check, green clear, so.
Still eradicated.
Still eradicated. And apparently you are required to post it once a year, indicating that it was there, it's been eradicated, it's all clear. So we'll do that every year because we're asked to do that. But Jo was able to come back over and update me on that.
Even the woman who came, I forget her name, from this date, very nice, but she was even scratching her head when she came in. She was like, I don't know why I'm here.
Come on in, would you like a tour? She was like, no, I don't want a tour. Where's your bathroom? She met with Jo and she went.
And we tried to save them the visit because we were like, hey, we have these letters indicating and the process. Like there was quite a few documents Jo had to gather and dig for because as we all know, the S U moved and so when you move from one spot to another and something's been eradicated and you're not concerned about it, it ends up, you know, buried in the file. So he found what he needed and was able to get me that information from today. So that's good. So we're in the clear there. Wellness, I know she's going back and forth right now.
October 20th.
Okay, so I was, I know there was an initial date and then there was a change, partly because I needed this room for something. And we're just getting going on negotiations at Fair Professionals this year. And town collaboration is about to sign, so I will wait until further down in the agenda to update on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments for Deanna?
And then I'm just gonna roll into the speed zone sign. So as is always the case, first week of school traffic is a little hairy. You can see incredible difference as you drive into the buildings this week. I guess the sort of benefit of, you know, that congestion was we had some families note it, go back and reach out to the state. We had already done some additional outreach with the representative who came to the town meeting, but that just sort of was enough to lighten additional fire, I guess, on people. And we received a follow-up letter that's in your packet, basically reversing their decision, but not across the board for both schools. So for the middle school, the state will be adding reduced speed zone signs with specific times listed. So you're allowed to post in a window of 45 minutes. We asked for an hour and then apparently they have an RSA that says it can only be 45 minutes. So during arrival and dismissal time. So the state's gonna pay for that, put those up. We gave them the times and that will be taken care of. At BES, we got approval for signage, but the town and the district will then research and share the cost of that. Connor and I just met on Monday. One thing we talked about was the blinking light that's out here on 125 is always blinking. So it would be great to be able to have that on a timer, so it blinks at arrival and dismissal times just so people don't become blind to it. One question that Connor had was, hey, who pays for that light? So we do actually pay $45 a month for that blinking light. It went from, it used to be $5 a month, like 11, 12 years ago, and now it's $45 a month. So I would think that with that, for one blinking light, what I kind of perceive as to be a bit of a hefty fee, hopefully we will be able to have some say on regulating it to only blink at certain times of day.
Certainly it's a pain, right?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Even in the 45-minute arrival.
It shouldn't be real expensive to install a timer.
Yeah, right. So we're hoping to have it on for that arrival and dismissal time, those 45-minute windows. And then we would love for it to coincide with an actual school zone speed sign that would only also be active during those times to remind people to... So the other thing they approved at BES, which is huge, so BMS already has a reduced speed zone sign. BES, wait a minute, do I have that backwards? I have that backwards.
Yes.
So BMS now will have the reduced speed, whereas it's just reliant on the slowdown leading up to the lights going from 55 down to 35, I think it is.
Because the speed limit through here is already 30 miles an hour, so they won't reduce it more than that.
Right, so we just need the lights hopefully to blink at the right times and coincide with that. And we will, we just are in the process of scheduling a district-town collaborative meeting to just talk through who's gonna be in charge of that and all that good stuff. Connor's gonna get a catalog, so we just have a starting point with what we're looking at for possibilities. So that is the sign update, which is good news. And then that brings us to, we're already down to number 10. Unless people have questions about the signs?
No, it's good news.
Yeah. Nurse sub coordinator. So we have sub coordinators for each of the three buildings. ECLC has a $1,000 stipend, the other two buildings are $2,000 stipends each. Stipend committee had a conversation around, so Katie's been coordinating it. It happens at, just like any sub, it happens nights, early mornings, et cetera. And it, because it's nurse and dependent on student medical needs, it's helpful if the nurses who have that information are the ones making the decision around when you need to have an RN in the building and who needs to go where. So I didn't realize this a year plus ago, that new stipends all had to come to you guys. So this is what I'm bringing you. The committee has already said, yep, this is a good idea. So asking to add a stipend for a sub nurse coordinator at $500 for the year.
How many nurses are there?
We have four nurses.
And so the sub coordinator at ECLC that gets a thousand, how many staff member are they coordinating for?
Forty, 35.
That seems high.
High.
Like proportionally. Coordinate for four people. Any idea of how they came to that amount?
We had started at 7:50 and some people in the committee were like, oh, that's a high number for... So they were weighing the number versus the knowledge or the, what you needed to know about medical plans. And that was the suggestion from the group. That I don't think anybody had any real strong opinions about it, but we did talk about the difference in numbers. How many days would you say, you might not know this, sorry to put you on the spot, that... So our part-time nurse fulfilled that role last year and we're looking to be like, ooh, we should probably formally compensate that. So she was helping Katie out in the group text, trying to figure out who needed to be where. I just don't have a good sense of how many days.
So from January to June, she covered 90%. She was working not as a part-time nurse, she was working as a full-time nurse because the amount of time that she needed to cover buildings for student medical needs and field trips was...
But she got compensated for that.
Day of the week. She did, yes.
Yeah.
She did, yes. And honestly, what we run up against is I am not an RN. I can't pretend to know all of the med, I know all of the medical needs that are very like complex and kind of high level, but we have a lot of kind of medical needs that I don't know about or need to know about, right? Because they're not kind of high-level needs. She knows those and knows when medications need to be delivered and when an inhaler needs to be offered and all of that. So being able to provide that person with, we need a nurse in this building at this time because we have 10 kids that are gonna need this type of support during that time. I don't have that knowledge. So it's really, what I end up against is the nurses all fighting for that coverage in a text message at 5:30 in the morning and I don't know those needs. So then they're all explaining it to me and it makes no sense. So that, it's helpful to have an RN kind of navigate those sub coverages for our student needs, but...
So you were saying, are you saying that there wouldn't be that group text of all the nurses? It would just be this one person who would say, this is the person and this is where they're going, X, Y, and Z?
Correct, yeah.
Then they would be informing the substitute of, here's the...
Yep.
Because the nurses don't leave that binder?
They do.
Okay.
They do. And she kind of gives, they all get coordinated, all the subs get coordinated. And nine times out of 10, our part-time RN is the one that's covering those needs because she has a flexible schedule outside of her regular schedule here. But we do have our sub RNs come in and they have been oriented to every building and student medical needs with their medical plans. So it's a kind of seamless the way that she's able to navigate that.
Often are stipens reviewed in?
Every year.
Yeah, okay. I just wonder, I mean, that's a lot of work and I think it's a valuable thing to have. But like Maury was saying, the disparity between that and what's being done at the ECLC.
Yeah. Yeah, the number of subs you're getting is a huge difference. But you need to know like, oh, these 10 students' medication can only be administered by an RN. Or if this student has a seizure, an RN must be in the building, so it can't, you know, it's just, it's that piece of it, not the number of subs you're getting, right? Because it's a sub, but it's knowing the needs of the kids.
So I'm guessing you're looking for a motion?
So we've done other starting stipends at 350, like if we're just, I don't know, it's hard to, it's hard to throw that out there. But when we look at like a starting club, if they meet, you know, once a week after school until the late bus and it's, you know... So just to give you some context of kind of where the range of stipends is, of course, keeping coaching stipends off the list. But like for, for after-school clubs and things like that, you know, they range from 350 up to like 2,000. I think the coordinator ones are the highest until you get into the coaching stipends.
I'm just concerned that, like particularly at ECLC, because it's the easiest, like that person finds out that they're coordinating for... that person finds out that they're coordinating for eight times, a number of people. That, and I get that the nurse coordinator has to do a little bit more, but like the, you know, the sub-coordinator has to know, like, who can be in what class and things like that. There's a lot, like, someone who helps with sub- coverage every morning, like, I know there's a lot to it. But I'm just concerned that that person's gonna be insulted or slighted that, like, you know.
Can we just, can we make the motion to bring it down to the starting three fifty? And then it can be reviewed next year and if there's an issue that can be brought back?
Yeah.
I'd make, I'd make a motion for that, for the three fifty.
And I think it would be worthwhile, like any new one, to keep track of like the number of days you had to coordinate versus say what a starting, how many number of times a starting club needs.
We're certainly not saying, I think I'm speaking.
Oh, yeah.
We're certainly not saying the value, we question the value, but right off the bat, without any additional.
We want to be fair.
So I'll make a motion for the.
I'll second that motion and with the caveat that you'll monitor how much is getting used and report back to us next year.
Katie, can you make yourself a note to just add it to your mid-year student services report? Then we'll have a kind of mid-year check-in.
Oh, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So you have two correspondences separate from your packet. We have a maternity leave request at the ECLC, which will be remainder of the year. So outside of the typical FMLA leave. And then we have a request, also, not also, also a maternity leave, but at BES for, I mean, you just never know when you have a child, right? But for what we think will be the twelve-week FMLA leave. We like to think we have control over those things, but we don't.
Do you have a motion?
I mean, technically for an FMLA leave, you don't, but like I said, you never, you never know. Like, you know, childbirth is complicated. If somebody's gonna need to have it longer or not, I feel like to make a motion to, so that these people know they.
I'll make a motion.
Welcome them back.
Congratulations asking for longer than twelve weeks, right off the bat, so.
Congratulations and I'll make that motion.
And I'll second the congratulations and the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then we have two actually in writing. I don't, we can certainly wait to approve Sarah Gould unless you're pretty confident that, you know, she's good to go.
I think, let's let her.
Let's let her, yeah, let's let her formally do it. I don't want to. So we have, so Scott Chase is a returning member and he indicates that he looks like he'll have more, more flexibility than he has in past years. So that is great news. He has a few years with us with that process. And then we have a new member, Lisa McKernan, who has also expressed interest. Because we had such, like turnover, I guess, in our historical seats of people who have fulfilled those positions and not a lot of interest initially. We then pushed the information back out on Facebook and had Connor post it at the town. And we did it post office, KLS, et cetera. That additional visibility hasn't resulted in more interest. So I'm thrilled to hear that. At least we'll have the three. Last year we had five, historically we've ended up with three.
Carrie brings up a good point. And we've never had this in my history here, is like, it looks like Lisa is an employee of the district. And I just want to make sure, you know, you can't serve on the school board and be an employee of the district.
Right.
I just want, yeah, I just wanted to triple check.
We'll check that, absolutely.
I'm sure it's not an issue because it's a, it's the type of committee level that it falls under, but I just wanted.
Yeah, no, that's a.
We just want to make sure that no one else comes back and there's any backlash to the, to the committee or Lisa, that people can question it, so.
We are very happy that she's, she's interested, believe me.
Appreciate it greatly.
Yes, yes.
I do wonder too, though, is after open house and picture day, maybe something on the school signs on nine and twenty-five, could say?
Yep.
Pleased, pretty pleased, with praying hands, maybe?
That was today, right, picture day?
No, sixteen, sixteenth and then eighteenth.
We were today.
Oh, sixteen is today. Today is the fifteenth.
Oh, my lord. Well, and then open houses are this week and so.
Well, I missed picture day.
Well, you can go to BMS and do picture day.
Do you know of any concern, without sharing, is it just like personal commitments where other folks can't do it? Is there any feedback about the process or anything that like, anything that we can?
So we had two new members last year. One had indicated they just don't, actually both indicated they just don't have the time. And then Dave Totti, who's been our longest-standing advisory budget committee member, also said it was a time factor. I suspect, given his new-ish position at Oyster River, he has evening commitments there and it just.
Oh, surprise. Dave.
I know.
I'm sure he's gonna be watching this recording late.
Well, I don't know about that.
It's like, what, it's, you know, eighth in the morning or something there, he's watching us. All right, so do we wanna, so let's just vote at the next meeting for everybody, but, you know, let them know, you know, we're interested. We're disconfirming as soon as I can.
Check.
Certainly, Scott, we're welcoming him back with open arms.
Perfect, I'll bring them all back next time with hopefully three.
At least three.
At least three. At least three members, yep. All right.
Laura. All right, so you never know, like, I want to read this to you and I'm never sure what, what you want me to highlight. So I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things that are new. And then if there's anything that you want me to highlight, I'm happy to do so, so. I, so the library, I know that Garth's not here, but he had asked about that before. And people have been curious about that with them moving. You know, how do we maintain that ECLC library relationship that was kind of special? Because we were right across the parking lot. So Wendy and I met this summer and came up with a few plans. So one of them is Miss Wendy is still coming to the ECLC monthly to read to the students. I wish I had a picture, but the, when you go in the ECLC, we have a classroom called the Discovery Room. And it's sort of taken on all sorts of different purposes, but it's been repurposed as our book nook. So it's, we've got kind of benches all around it and it's just a fun space. We put lots of stencils on the wall and created this nice reading area, which actually teachers are taking students to. But that'll be where Wendy will read to the students. And then we talked about like students having access to books, which we're really lucky at our school. We have a lot of, lot of books. But it was nice that students got to go to the library because they often nudged their parents and said, hey, I want to go to the libraries. We're like, how do we sort of, you know, create that opportunity? So we came up with this little punch card. So if students are gonna get this, this week, actually Wendy's gonna do her first reading. And so they get this little punch card and there are six punches. So if, and this is for pre-K and K, they can take this to the library, get six punches, bring it back to the office. And we have this little, little prize for them, a little bag of reading goodies. So kind of a way to just, you know, get families to take kids over there. So that's, that's that. And then it is library card month too. So we'll all be encouraging kindergarteners to get their library card, which is a big deal. And especially for Wendy, because there's like a statewide competition and Barrington usually does very well. And so we want to maintain that honor. Additionally, we'll keep promoting the Thousand Books Before Kindergarten through newsletters, talking to students about that. And then just in thinking about our ELA, you know, sort of constantly figuring out how to, you know, promote reading in the school and promote good reading instruction in the school, I've really been thinking about interactive read-alouds and just the way that we, you know, read books to students. And it's certainly a teaching art, you know, it's not just, there's just sort of like reading the book and then there's this interactive read-aloud concept where it really focuses on vocabulary, comprehension, asking kids the who, what, when, where and why questions. So I've challenged every class to read two hundred books interactively this year. And it's sort of gone with our mountain theme, they all have a big poster with a mountain and it has one hundred little spots, so they each have two posters and these little stickers. So classes are pretty excited to, to do lots of reading. And then Wendy, of course, comes and she is the interactive read-alouder. So she will, you know, can also be a part of that.
Does each class get to count that book?
Get what?
Get to count Wendy's book?
Yeah. You hear her book, read it, you know, then it counts, so, which is fun. And I have, I already have them, but they're like really fun, like trophies that say our class read two hundred books. So I'll hand those out and then I'll collect them and use them again next year. Reuse them and I bought like little medals for the kids. So when the classes hit that goal, we'll have a celebration. And then if the whole school hits that goal, which I'm pretty sure they easily will, we'll have, we have some fun things in the works. So that's sort of just, you know, library reading in general. Our nurse, Catherine Cunningham, has secured the Lions Club to come in. They did this, they came into BES, actually Rick, when you and I were on the.
Your small, your small, small pleasure is back.
Oh.
She was just wondering if she could listen to some of the meetings, so we could.
We have never, I have never heard.
Fantastic.
Yes. Mrs. Daley's talking about the ECLC.
She's talking about the ECLC.
The nurse, Mrs. Cunningham, have you met her yet?
Hopefully not. So we had, actually had the Lions Club come and do screenings a few years back at BES. And then with COVID and whatnot, it didn't happen anymore. But we have secured her to come in, which is great because they just have this amazing equipment. So we're pretty excited to get all students in kindergarten's eyes screened because we do find that as we get into looking at the dyslexia law and reading and screening them for reading, sometimes it's a question of, I wonder if they can see. So, you know, we rely on parents to go and get appointments, which can take, you know, a long time, given the way just appointments are. So, so that's happening next week, which is really exciting.
Well, and the Lions is such a great organization because it will help families.
Yes, if they need them, yeah. And they get a really comprehensive report. So Chris Public is coming to actually do them herself. So she's, and she's, you know, been with the Lions Club and has done a lot of great work for them. So, yeah, so they are coming, actually this week, eighteenth and nineteenth. I feel like the rest is sort of self-explanatory, but I'm happy to elaborate on anything or if there's anything that I didn't put in my report that you're curious about.
I had a question, not that it was lacking in the report at all, just I'm adding. I know that we had talked a lot about, the code of conduct is like, that like phrase is like burned into everyone, everyone's collective consciousness. But I think of, whenever we talk about it, I think of the ECLC often because the code of conduct is, I just, just in thinking about the little bodies and the little persons that are there and adjusting to that. And then also as families are first entering the district, what their thoughts might be on seeing that type of document while they're also getting welcome messages and things like that. So how is, anecdotally, how is the family feedback been? Have you gotten any about that? And then how, how has the staff been feeling about it?
We've always had a code of conduct, right? It's not new and it's, you know, for, for us in that thing. But I do think we've sort of like raised it to sort of a, to more of an awareness of like a document. And, you know, and I was cautious too, like, and I think you all get the newsletters. Like the last newsletter is where I really like laid down the law, so to speak. Because I felt like putting that in the first few newsletters felt like just cold. So, you know, I put little pieces in all the newsletters, but then putting that in there, so. But I haven't really received feedback from parents, feedback from staff, is that they feel heard and supported. You know, and we've made it developmentally appropriate. We've created this owl promise to go with our owl's nest. So it's just three little statements and everybody is committed to. So we have a slideshow, so staff can put it up on a Google slide and we've printed out little posters. So there, it's, you know, every morning, every class, every student is saying this little promise that, you know, we're gonna be respectful and we're gonna be responsible and we're gonna be safe. So I think that, you know, and again, I think we've always done that, but sort of being more in unison and just really. So that's helped. And then we have the recess promise and the hallway promise and the bathroom promise and we have all the promises. And then just feedback I've heard from teachers is that they've, I've really encouraged them to truly take the first six weeks and teach these things to our students because I don't think, you know, we're not collecting data yet on behavior because it wouldn't be fair because they haven't been taught what's expected. So after that first six weeks, then we'll, the next phase will be data collection phase. So, you know, that'll, that'll be a good process. And that, I think, will be sort of interesting because that's where we're gonna share some scenarios, you know? And we all sort of have different tolerances and different, so we're gonna share, actually the next staff meeting on October first, share scenarios, so here's the behavior, is it a level one, two, three, or four? And then, you know, so would you document this or would you not document it? Is this teacher managed? Is this office managed? And, you know, we'll, we'll get into that more. So that might, I think that'll, you know, create just some great, healthy conversation. Does that answer your question?
It does, definitely, yeah, thank you, thank you for all that work.
So I think that, yeah, I think it's been, it's been really good, you know, yeah. But not, it hasn't felt like there's this, you know, big, huge, you know, like shift in what we're doing. But it's just been a better awareness. And I think that the data collection will be the place where we can make, we'll be better at that. We've always collected a lot of data. And actually, I think this will ease up because we'll talk about sort of, when you, you know, write in the little statement about what has happened, it will just be a little statement. Teachers like to be very verbose and sometimes they'll share data with me and I'm like, I've got my Morris stack of books to read, folks. This is another novel that, you know, we don't need to, you know. So it'll be, yeah, but teachers are working hard and they really appreciate that they've been given permission to truly spend six weeks teaching what is expected. And that doesn't mean they're not teaching, as you said, like, I mean, you were there the eleventh day and you go in and then math is happening. But they've, you know, there, it's really just, it's centers, but it's, you know, not highly academic. But the kids are learning how to rotate to centers. And when I'm at the teacher center, what that looks like versus when I'm at a center that is not managed by a teacher or the assistant. So, you know, there's, there's just so many things.
Yeah, yeah.
We actually, at our first staff meeting, I had them brainstorm everything that you have to teach little people the first six weeks of school. Hundreds and hundreds of things, right? How to sharpen a pencil. There's, there's so much to it, so, yeah, good.
Thank you so much.
So I guess that brings us to policies. You weren't here for the alphabet two last time.
I was not here, no.
And this will be a quick policy update. So we are bringing back the four that we did adopt immediately in August for the start of the school year. We wanted to make sure we gave policy committee time to go back and revisit those and make suggestions, edits as needed. So A, B, the New Hampshire Parental Bill of Rights, there's, there's really nothing we could change or needed to change there. Truly, that policy is a place to put everything we were already mandated to do anyway in one place. So that one remains as it was back in August. B, E, D, G, meeting minutes, again, no changes there. The changes that were made to that policy to update, just to refresh people's memory, were things that we were already doing. But now it's required to list your attendees and then also to list your start and end times and also to note who your note taker is. And, you know, it's not a bad idea once in a while to refresh your memory on some of those policies. Because in committee, we were like, ooh, yikes, there's some pieces here that we need to get a little bit tighter on, like when your draft minutes need to become available and things like that. So, but good news is, no additional edits or changes to that. And we're, we're complying with those requirements already. E, H, A, G is the use of generative. EHAG is the Use of Generative Artificial Intelligence, the piece that we needed to address there, the addition or change we made was to establish a little subcommittee off of technology to write the AI use plan during trimester one, so once we have that, so the policy requires a plan, you know, basically, how you're, what the approval process will be for any of those platforms, how a teacher will go about asking for that, what we will, how we will notify students, which ones are allowable, and if they are on platforms that they shouldn't be, what the potential consequences would be for doing that. With GoGuardian, not much gets through our, the Chromebooks in, in the middle schools without it getting flagged, so, so we need to write a plan, so we will do that during trimester one, and then Cole shared with us his experiences at Dover High School with the unauthorized communication device use policy, so that is JICJ, and we wanted to make sure that our consequences listed in Section D were in compliance with our code of conduct, because it gets confusing, and I misspoke when I talked about it in August, so we made sure we went back and looked at that, so, given that we suspect most of the violations will happen at the middle school level, because our elementary kiddos, yes, they have their phones, but we never had an issue with them being out, we made sure that we took what the middle school communicated to families about what the consequences would be for code of conduct, and then added, like, additional consequences may include a Saturday detention, but we also wanted to make sure it was age-appropriate, we're not going to pull a fourth grader in for a Saturday detention necessarily, right? So just being clear about the first, second offenses, and then when the device would be confiscated by a teacher versus to the office for parent pickup, so that Section D consequences and violations was a change from when you saw it in August.
I just have a question, because first consequence is the teacher's going to confiscate it and keep it to the end of the day, the second consequence is it's going to be confiscated and kept to the end of the day, how are they different? Just who's confiscating and keeping it?
So teacher, yeah, teacher doing it, so that it's a level one offense, where it's just a, a teacher consequence in communication, versus it going to the office and being logged as a behavioral incident?
So how does someone know, but it gets logged as a behavioral incident? Okay, so that, it, so like, you know, in social studies, I have my phone out, may take it, the next day, I'm at PE, and I have my phone out, how will the PE teacher know that's the second offense?
So they have internal spreadsheets that they use grade-level teams to ensure that they have that information, because we don't want to enter things in Power School that get reported to the state until it rises to that level of infraction, so we don't want to log everything, you know, in Power School until it rises to that, so they, they have grade-level spreadsheets where they log behavior, so they can keep track of the repeated offenders.
Is that the expectation, they're looking at that regularly to know that, so like, the PE teacher has to look at all four grade levels all the time?
Mm-hmm, yeah, and they, they do, because they have to know whether this is a level one consequence, or if it's a level one, I shouldn't say consequence, a level one violation, because if a level one violation is repeated, then it becomes a level two, even though what you've done may be a level one, but if you continuously to do it, you're not learning your lesson, then it becomes a level two, so we had to come up with a mechanism to keep track of all that. And it tends to be the same offenders, you know, you have your one-offs, but there's usually the same group of kiddos that we're monitoring and tracking.
Has there been much of an issue since the school year started?
They did such a great job with it when they updated their code of conduct two years ago, that this was a minor shift, if really any, for the middle school this year, like, they were, they were already subscribing to the phones off in a way, so instead of it being off and away, it's bell-to-bell now, right?
I just had to change on number three under D, can we add, and I'm sorry, I didn't pick this up at the meeting, parent and/or guardian?
Yes, yep.
Then on number four, I, I really want, and I thought, I thought we were going to do something, that we talked about in policy committee, where we're adding verbiage that says, may include Saturday detention for middle school, or, like, we already clearly established that Saturday detention would only apply to middle school students.
Middle schoolers, yep.
However, you want to wordsmith that, but I know we wanted to call out that detention piece is only middle school.
Right, because we want it to be developmentally appropriate, yeah.
Even though I know we say developmentally appropriate, if I'm not in the school, involved in school, I don't know what the school considers developmentally appropriate.
Exactly, no, agree, so...
Those are the only changes there.
Yep.
Well, that's, Carrie, that's why I was thinking under four, do you just say and/or, and slash or, loss of privilege, so that it gives you, you don't have to do all three, you can, something like that.
And/or, yep, so I can add the or, and I can add specific to BMS only, and then guardians under number three.
There's just this straight bracket there, too.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, just a weird straight bracket.
I see it.
Looking for the other one, so...
All right, to that, we'll come back with those edits, or...
We've already immediately adopted, these are just changes, so...
Yeah, just bring them back with the edits.
Yep. JICJ, bring back, all right.
I make a motion to approve the following policies for, oh, following policies, AB, BEDG, EHAG, and then, do I, do I need to make a motion that JICJ will be brought back?
Sure, you know, as, when, once amended.
And then JICJ will be brought back as amended as well.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, public comments, while we do have one member of Public online, and no one in person, so, any in person speaking? Seeing no hand being risen.
I make a motion to enter non-public citing RSA 91-a colon three comma two A.
Second.
All of them favor? Roll call.
Baker, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Neil, aye.
Walker, aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone online.